So, we will call this city council work session discussing the city's social media policies and procedures and have a demonstration of the new city website to order and I'll turn it over to the city clerk.
So, our fabulous fantastic MIS department procured this 70-inch television for less than $1,000 and have connected us with the ability to do presentations here.
Oh, which is great. This is really nice.
And then, starting, you know, next Monday when we have presenters come to the podium, they'll be able to control it from there.
Excellent.
And I'll just give you one more added feature that we're going to have is with the new budget, and this all is under the mid-cycle budget amendment council approved from last summer. You gave us $10,000 and with that money, we were able to upgrade all the microphones, the sound system, that all the equipment underneath here, the ceiling speakers, the new camera, and this television set, all for under $10,000.
Great job.
So with the new budget, we're going to get a new laptop for presentations and they're going to install a toggle switch here, which will enable us to show the viewing audience when we have a presentation on the TV. We can toggle and that screen will show on the television and then when we're done with the presentation, it will toggle it back to the room view.
That's excellent.
So that'll help everyone at home be able to see what's on the screens.
That's wonderful.
So that's coming.
Can I just interrupt you? I'm sorry. So just for the public that's here, I'm gonna go ahead and have the clerk give all her presentations, but we will have public comments at the end.
My timer's out. I thought it was a big idea.
Okay, good. All right. Thanks for letting me interrupt you.
So, this is the homepage. Now, we're still in the sandbox, so this website won't launch for real until tomorrow morning, but this is the look and feel of the new website. And so, the resolution is a little bit larger and it changes based on your monitor resolution, but I will show you that theoretically it all fits, it can all fit onto one page. So, people at home don't have to scroll to find these quick buttons. This photography is local photographer Kalani Woodlock. We purchased a series of photographs from her and are using them for the website in different locations. So what we have is a quick pick, kind of a easy-to-find-things website for everyone to use. What we've done is across the top, we have tabs that you'd simply just hover your mouse over and it drops down to this extensive quick search list of things. So, we put the community first in the picks, the businesses second, the city departments, and then government because we're putting our citizens first. And then we have this new feature, I want to, and this is, again, it's like a new thing in websites to make things easier. So this information is organized by what you want to do. You want to sign up, do you want to contact someone? And so that should help people find information a lot quicker. The other feature for this new website is this big search button right in the middle and it is a smart search and it, this website is designed to bring back any document that hits, more like a Google search. So if you type in dog license or dogs, it should come back with a whole list of ways that, different ways that dog appears. Based on the analytics that we did for the previous website, the top result, the top thing that people access on the website is campgrounds and parks. Forty, over 40,000 picks in one year on campgrounds and parks. And over 40% of the people in town or visitors are accessing our website through mobile devices. And so this is a mobile-friendly website now. It will adjust to the device that you're using to view it. So, next highest is harbor, library, museum. So those are the top three picks for departments. Then we have jobs, bill pay, and then the calendars that go, just, I mean, the functionality or the information and the content is what we have today, what we offer today. It's just being displayed in a new updated fashion and make it a lot easier to find. Does anyone want to see anything in particular?
I'd like to see a council packet and then also public notices.
So, one of the things that we're doing is migrating some of the content that we have historically put on the homepage as a news feature, a news flash feature, will now be stored in legislative history and we'll be sending out the link directly into legislative history. So Laserfish, you guys are familiar with it in that way. Agendas, audio recordings, packets, all of that is stored in legislative history, so we're going to provide the links directly into that. We're storing less, less of those documents. We're not duplicating it on the website and in legislative history anymore.
Where is, yes, where is legislative history kept? How can it be found on the new website?
Okay, so legislative history is, it is a separate website that we contract with a company called E-Docs.
So if you were, as just a normal person in Seward and you were like, huh, I want to know what's going on in this town, let me look at, see what the council's doing.
Right.
And you went to the city website and then you tried to figure it out, where, what would you end up with?
Okay, well, you would go say, if you wanted to see.
Like there, I just saw city councils. If I was just a random person, I'd say like, oh, city council, like under government. And you're like, how's this town run? Who runs this town? Okay, council. And then what? Oh, cool, listen? Nice.
So, we have, yeah, and I will say that we're, so for about four months, the, all the departments have been, we've been running this in the sandbox and we've been maintaining our current website. And at one point a few months ago, when they uploaded all our content into the new website, they cut us off. There was a, there was a date that happened when they could no longer migrate our content. And so our departments have to, have had to maintain two sites at the same time. And so there may be some holes that we'll discover, but we'll just continue to work on them. But all the departments have been trying really hard to make sure that their new, the new website was ready to go.
So there's council meeting agendas, and so what if I wanted to look at an agenda and then look at the packet?
And what I'm thinking is, we probably need to add a pick that says packets.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Because this is, I'll show you where this brings you, this link.
Under legislative.
It'll take you to legislative history. But there's more than one way to get to legislative history. So what we have is in this top right button from the homepage.
If you click through, you could eventually get to a packet?
Yes.
And you, could you get to legislative history and search for something like pets in Seward City Limits and it'll tell you everything that has to do with pets?
Now, once you leave and you go into legislative history, you'll search in their advanced search. And yes, you can. So you would go into the folder for council, perhaps resolutions or ordinances and type in pets or dogs.
Or what if you just wanted to generally find out how Seward deals with its pets?
Is that accessible from the search, from the smart search?
Legislative history?
No, from the smart search.
Like just put in dogs, like you said, or pets.
Sure. Let's see what we get. We didn't get anything yet.
Okay.
Not yet.
Okay. Um, I'm a follow-up, but a little tangential, which is like the policies we were talking about. Would we be able to find the policies of our government and its employment entity through the website or legislative history?
The answer is yes, and here it looks like it's under the city manager department. And it hasn't been migrated, so we'll have, that's work that'll have to be done. Okay? Because today, it's on the city website right here. This is their current website and it's right here on the pick.
So like, if we go to that, we can see the pet policy?
And it goes to this page. And tomorrow, it'll go to this page, which will have to be populated. Does that make sense? So there's a whole.
Like tonight's Y2K, tomorrow's gonna be the new millennium?
Right. That still has work to be done on it.
So what is the timeline of the, all that information going over?
As much and as soon as possible. It's just ongoing and it has been for months. They, yeah, folks have been trying to get things put over for months. So.
What about, is there a section for like legal notices, like legal postings and?
So we don't currently do notices on the website. We'll do the, I mean, the calendar will show the meetings, so I'll show you.
RFPs that go out.
There's a pick for RFPs, that'll be maintained.
I was just thinking, you know, as we're getting further and further as a society away from print media, and I know, we need to continue to post in three paces, there's lots of people that don't have access to computers, but if there was, I don't know, something to consider, like a place where all our legal notices in one place for people to look at.
Well, the notices themselves aren't maintained for a long period of time.
Are you talking about notice of meeting?
No, yeah, no, I meant, I meant like P&amp;Z, you know, I mean, we post them, I guess it would be under the city calendars.
Right.
So they're posted in the newspaper now.
Yeah, no, I know. I was just thinking on our city website, are the calendars, so I guess, are the calendars up?
So the calendar is sort of the way to access when the, when things are coming up.
Are you saying the website is another one of the locations?
Yeah, kind of an electronic location to be like, oh, what? You know, it's not, in code, there's specific places it has to be posted. I'm not saying change that, but just wondering if there is a way to.
So, for example, I just picked on tomorrow night's meeting for P&amp;Z off the calendar.
Yeah, right. Oh, yeah, this is what.
That's what you're looking for?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it would just be under specific meetings then?
And you can, you can change this calendar to be very specific to just what you want it to show.
Okay. Where'd you find that? I want to look at that again.
It's just from.
So it's linked to the meeting, which is great. So if you clicked on the meeting item, then you get linked to the information.
Can I do what you're doing or do you have a special preview?
This is not live to the public yet.
Oh, so I can't follow along?
No.
Okay.
But here on the homepage is the pick for calendar.
Nice.
Okay, so that's how I got to it.
So wait, but you're saying tomorrow?
It'll go live tomorrow.
I can follow along.
Right.
Okay.
Right. And be gentle with us.
Yeah.
This weird, you know, it is, it's still a work in progress.
Clearly, it's a lot of information to track.
It's a lot of content and actually part of the mid-cycle budget amendment that you gave us was to, if you recall way back earlier this year, you had approved that I could hire a summer intern to do the work of migrating this content and you approved like $4,000 or $5,000. We had the company do it for $2,500. It was hundreds and hundreds of pages that they migrated for us, but again, it gets to a point in time when it's cut off and it's a huge volume of content, so we are also diligently working on it.
With the default at this point, if you're looking for something to go to, since we're switching over to this one, this website, say there's something I wanted to look up, do you, the default just be to go to legislative history and try to look it up or Laserfish on those two separate things?
Yeah, that is where everything, all legislative history is stored there. So minutes, recordings, packets.
So you can still access the information?
Absolutely.
Through there?
Right.
Even if it's not populated on the site yet?
Yeah, except like as, for instance, the policies pick, that was, that was empty. That won't be on legislative history. That's not something we store on there. So we'll, as we identify these things, we'll continue to get with the department heads and make sure that they, you know, put some attention to getting the links.
Can I ask a question?
When you click on the parks and rec, the site in there, the campground, what is the campgrounds and rec? I was just wondering, is that just city campgrounds or is that all campgrounds in the area or what?
No, it's the city one. It's the city page.
So it's just the city campground?
Right, because the city website, we can't promote private businesses through the city's website, so.
There is no private business for that except me. You guys have six campgrounds and I have one.
Well, there's out-of-town campgrounds.
Right, well, mine is inside.
So this is how the parks and rec, so every department owns their content and is responsible.
You know, that's a good point though. If it, you know, right now on our city website, we do have links to like the chamber, so that would be helpful to make sure that we have.
And the chamber will continue to, will continue to link to the chamber and have that partnership with them because that's where we would send people to get information about any business in town is the Chamber of Commerce. Lodging, campgrounds, all that, you know, restaurants, everything. Yeah.
Well, I mean, we're continuing to discuss it, but it looks really good.
So there are a couple of things I just want to point out that we are making a few tweaks too. So, oh, you know what? I'll wait until we, I'll just wait until the next section.
I mean, especially because I don't do a lot of things on computer. I have a computer in my hand, so if it's mobile device friendly, then that's.
So here's another thing that this website is giving us. It is in the upper right-hand corner, ADA accessibility. So this feature allows somebody to put in whatever their disability or whatever they need help with, they can define it and the website will.
What are my options?
It's visual, hearing, it's all, it's basically all disabilities as identified by the ADA Act, the American, Americans with Disabilities Act.
That's amazing.
And so they outsource to another company who's, who, all they do is ADA accessibility on the website, so you can have all these picks. Did you see the font change when I just did that?
No.
What's it doing?
It's, well, I just asked, I picked legible fonts, so somebody might need that, and I picked bigger text and it got bigger.
Wow.
So, there's a whole series of things that people with disabilities would either know or some, you know, I'm not trained in it and how to do that, but the ability is there for us to offer it. Legislative history, and then there's a contact us, and then this stay connected is actually going to be updated and we'll get into that because Carl Schaefer-Meyer is here to talk about Nixel and that is, we'll get into that with the communications that we have.
So one function that I really like, I don't know how Doug likes it, if it's helpful, but that report a problem, is that, is that still on?
Yep, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about that.
Get there, okay, I'm sorry.
Yep, yep, you bet. We're gonna talk about it. So that is just an overview of the website and I just asked anyone to send questions, you know, call us or send an email if you have any questions about how to use it or any, any functionality.
I'm just wondering whether we're gonna be having our budget accessible through the website and salaries.
Uh, well, the salaries aren't currently posted on the website. If that becomes something that is posted, then it will clearly be put on here. Departments.
And the budget? I'm looking at other city websites while we're doing this and just, since I can't steer with that one and I just see that they have things like, on the front page, they have special meeting notices is on the main page, and then they also have the budget where you can click through and like look at their whole budget. Fairbanks has it and so does Port Angeles.
Search is not working for me.
Do we have that now on our city website or do you have to go to the library and get that big book?
You can get that, yes.
Do you think that's why? Yeah, Sue, view the budget.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure, Carl just is suggesting that maybe it's because we're still in the sandbox that some of this might not be working, but I'm not sure.
Oh, but that information could be on there.
Because I just, I just searched on like three different topics that should have come up on something.
Yeah, and there's nothing, that's disconcerting.
And it's not, so maybe it's, I don't know. I guess we'll find out in the morning.
Is it still on the beta test?
It's still a new thing.
When we go live.
Still a new thing.
Because I know we have a document on there that's called Rules for Dogs and that should have come up on the search under dogs.
I thought maybe the pet licensing thing, because I've seen people posting about that lately on social media about doing that. So it seems like if I was a pet owner, I would say, oh, wait, is there a rule about this? I would go to the website and say like, what's the rule?
Yeah, so tomorrow, we'll have fun checking it out.
Well, you know what they say about bad dress rehearsals means a good performance, so tonight's our dress rehearsal.
Is that what you want to say?
Yes. But it's not bad, I didn't mean that, but.
Thank you for that.
It's just, yeah, it's underway. Okay, so the next thing that.
Well, maybe for, apply for AN, maybe that's where.
Oh, because you apply for a pet thing? Is that what you do?
Oh, that's under, the categories for, under I want to. When you say, what do you want to do? It tells you all the categories that you could do. What do you want to do?
But wouldn't you be able to find it if you just generally search for a dog? It should say, it should take you to be apply for a permit your dog or something.
Employment permit. I'm not sure what permit that is. Oh, voter registration license. The dogs aren't in here.
We have a chauffeur's license?
What if, that's a taxi.
Taxi.
Yep. So we might not currently have that on our, on our old website. We might not have that content on there, but we could certainly create it.
Is there, is there animal control somewhere?
A department?
Yes. So that's where you would go, I would say, if you know it's in the police department.
And?
Yeah, if you knew that. Yeah, I wouldn't know that. Pet licensing and permits. Oh, it just says it provides them.
Right.
Yeah, that's all still done by paper.
That is a cute puppy.
Yeah, great. So, but we could, we can, you know, put some more information on there.
What'd you learn from tonight's presentation, Sue? That there's a cute puppy. A real cute puppy.
Yeah. Scott, did you want to add anything to?
No, I think most websites nowadays are very cross-referenceable, so you can go multiple ways and kind of, it'll learn and adapt as they get more of our content.
More intuitive.
You, you think the website is smart?
Yeah, it'll, it'll cross-reference you and then I, and it'll, you know, most of them will change. Like if the most common thing, it'll rotate that one and it'll.
I wondered if it could do that.
It's a little, the backend is pretty different from our current website and so you have to embed meta tags in this and there's a whole series of things that you have to do just to get content to load, so it may be that, you know, need a little bit more training to.
Get on there and play with it.
Get on it, play with it, yeah. It's, yeah.
More of a general question. So tomorrow, when it goes live and I start messing around with it, when I have questions, who's our point person? Is it the company? Is it you? Is it MIS? Should we call Dustin?
No, you can send your questions or comments to me and if they're technical, I'll reach out to Dustin and MIS group, but if they're not technical, we'll still get answers and, or it'll, if you just want to give us a heads up, hey, something's missing here or some, you know, that kind of thing, I'll just take them all in and disperse them with, I'll work with Scott and get him to the right department.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then more specifically regarding the budget and regarding the salaries, what do we need to do to make those get on the website?
Well, the budget, I'm, is already currently on the, it's on our old website, so there's no reason why it won't appear here on the, on this new website. The salaries aren't posted on the current website and so until or unless, I think, council, either Scott chooses to or council directs the city manager to, then they won't appear.
Okay. So, when you say that the budget is currently on the website, what I've seen of it is that we have the whole book, but like when I look at Port Angeles, for instance, it has budget for previous years and quarterly budget status reports. In order to have that kind of thing on our website, is that something that we would need to pay to have constructive so it could be?
No.
Or is there a way for these website companies to use the content and make it more navigable?
So it's on us now. The website company has done what they're gonna do and so now it's on us, all the departments, everyone owns their own content for that department. So if you want the budget information presented in a certain way for finance, that's something that, you know, the city manager is in control of because finance is his department, so.
Okay.
This is the current budget information that's on our website. We don't have the 2019 CAFR to update.
Right.
So this is as current as it gets.
And the monthly reports are in the packets.
And the monthly reports are in the packets. And those are not.
I'm not debating whether the information is there. I'm just seeing that there are other places where it's way more navigable and I'm wondering how much did they have to invest to have that? Is it more of just like a stance of the town of being more open and transparent or is it more like they chose $100,000 to creating these?
There's no reason why we couldn't if, I mean, we can put those monthly reports on the website. That's, that's not a problem. It's just a, it's just a choice on what you do with the page and what information you present.
Okay, that's really a great answer. Thank you very much.
Are there any other questions?
So this isn't done. It's just a work in progress. It's gonna get changed. Things are gonna appear. Things are gonna disappear maybe.
Right.
So we just, we'll butler our way through it for a while and hopefully in a year's time, it'll kind of be set.
Oh, I sure hope it doesn't take that long, Joe. But, but it does require, you know, just, it's much more sophisticated website than the current one and so, I mean, we went and we had a hands-on training with all the, every department has at least two representatives that are authorized users to go on and alter the content on here and we did an off-site training at Abtec First Avenue in their computer lab for like three and a half or four hours one day. That was just one training and so it's, it's much more sophisticated and it's, and everyone, it's a, it's very spread out on who has access to it. We don't have one webmaster who, who handles all the content, so.
It's like halfway to Wikipedia.
It's a lot of work.
Yeah. And so everybody, yeah, we all fit it in when.
So, social media policies, oh, I'm sorry.
One more question. Is there any way to see what the mobile site looks like?
Well, once it, once it goes live. Oh, no, actually, yeah.
Where is my?
Into the admin.
Okay. I take a home.
Oh, is it in there?
Their student's slash is the, just the website.
Oh.
The website shows.
They've got fixed requests and Seward business. I think they used to take out the word home.
I think that you should take out the word.
It's very sensitive, hover. Let me see if my login is...
No, it's not me, I love those.
I did look this through and I know it's... It's cool. I like it in. Do you? Let me see if it's in here. Otherwise we can't... One more try. Okay, here I am.
We can do this with T to L.
Very savvy, tech savvy.
So here's what it looks like on that.
Oh.
Hello, device.
Like I don't even know how you just did that. Good job.
No, we, we just tap them.
Just come in your iPhone, that'll, here's what it looks like.
Nice.
Cool. Thank you.
Thanks.
It's nice to see that it's not a totally different website interface from one thing to another.
It's a good point.
I don't...
I use, I only use the mobile.
Yeah, same.
Because I, that's the easiest way for me to access it. Unless I'm at the library, which thank goodness there's a library that has computers. Cause I need to use that a lot. But it's when, in the old one, you have to either go to the full site. Sometimes when you're explaining something to somebody. Because it's, it's hard to follow sometimes because you're looking at two totally different sites. From mobile to website, so...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Newsflash.
Okay, so, if we can move to the next thing. The social media policies we have in the city. One is a social networking policy. Starts on page two and that relates more to employees, um, doing their own Facebook posts and that sort of thing. And then the social media policy that Mr. Mazzaro's put in place just a few months ago relates more to the city's Facebook pages and the city's official use of social media as employees.
Are we reading through these now?
It was just requested, that was just part of the, you know, I think the information was requested. And so, um, I just wanted to include both policies because that's what we have.
Okay.
For the city.
I don't quite understand, does the one sunset the other?
Um, no, what, they deal with different, in different aspects, sort of different topics. All, both related to social media. But one is, uh, addresses more employees who are posting on Facebook, representing themselves as employees or, you know, sort of the prohibition to disparage the city if they're making posts on Facebook, that sort of thing. Like be aware that you are a city employee and how you are representing yourself in the social media world. And the second policy is as official city of steward, social media account holders, this is how the city will conduct their social media accounts. So one's personal and one's...
I just have that.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. This has, uh, including an individual's own or another web blog or blog journey or journal or diary, personal website, social networking or affinity website, web bulletin board or chatroom, whether or not associated or affiliated with the city. So that's, this isn't just the cities.
That's how it's defined, I see that on page two. Is that where you...
Yeah.
I mean, on page five, on the lower right.
Page five, misuse of city position? What are we looking at?
It's page five if you go to the lower right page numbers.
Uh-huh, I think I'm there.
Under definitions.
Under definitions. Are, what are you talking about? Social media subheading?
That's a definition of social media.
Okay. Was there a...
It's fair, very broad definition.
Yeah, what was the goal, John?
Um, that it's not just city website. It could be your own, personal or...
Yeah, so it's pretty broad. Is that, would you agree with that statement? That it's broad, okay.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
So the development of this policy, um, came from, uh, we collected, um, various policies from around the state of Alaska. And then the one that this is largely modeled, well, originally was largely modeled after, was the Kenai Peninsula Borough Policy, which is about 10 pages long, I think. And then our attorney firm took that and distilled it down into something a little more realistic and got it to three pages. So where, um, that's where we're at with that policy. There was lots and lots and lots of content in the borough policy that just was over and above where you wanna go.
So basically, it's just really dealing with not putting out any city information that might be, um, what's the word?
Yeah, defamatory, it says.
On any kind of social media, was basically what it's doing. Sensitive or, I lost my word there for a second.
Where's the, where's the definition? And, and, um, I don't know who to ask this of, but I've had a lot of concerns brought to, brought to me about this policy. And I've been concerned to know how and who makes the decision about what constitutes defamatory, obscene, proprietary, libelous, libelous.
I think, if I may, there, I think, I think that's covered here too on this one here, under discrimination and harassment. Cause it, it kind of defines that one out there too. And I was reading this one before.
Can you help me find where you're looking?
It's on page three. Or six.
Yeah, the big three. Uh, page six, there, discrimination, harassment. And it kind of runs through all of them there too that, you know, the intent or effect of the broadcast to embarrass, harass, defame or retaliate. And so it kind of covers, I think, all of them there too. So it doesn't really leave it up to like one person to say, oh, this may be this. It's, hey, if that intent is there, yeah. Bullying, harassment.
Wait, so who does it leave it up to?
Well, that, this is, this is the policy to the city manager. So when someone, someone, um, then, you know, is not following policy, then that referred right back to the manager.
I'm trying to follow you, I really am. I just don't see, it seems like there's some circulatory and it's like somebody's standing in the middle of the circle making the decision about what counts is...
Well, I'm sure it's the city manager in consultation with legal and the H, and HR.
And they're, they're saying, yeah, the three of us in this circle decide that this is...
Yeah.
Defamatory.
Yeah, definitely. Someone has to.
Yeah.
And I think when they...
Someone has to?
Yeah. From council member, when they come to, when they have, when they see a violation of the policy and they're gonna take an action, when they come to legal, one of the biggest things we're looking at is there is a constitutional line, right? We have to be careful not to cross that.
It can be really tricky.
And so for us, we're, we're, we tend to be very conservative in protecting those rights to free speech and making sure if there's, if there is any nuance there, that the city knows its risks or where that line is and that they stay on the right side of it. I think that's helpful.
Well, reading through this, it sounds like as long as people are employees that they have to abide by the policy. But after that, there's really no recourse. Is that how you understand it?
Yeah, this is for employees, yeah.
Okay. It's for employees and elected and appointed officials. So it's for us too. According to the definition of city employee on page five. Help me find it, Sue, please. Page five, on the, where it says...
Say who's city employees are.
City employee, read the definition. Well, I won't read it out loud, but it includes elected and appointed officials. Boards and commission members. I thought it said volunteers too somewhere. Volunteers for the city.
Mm-hmm, considered employees.
I think essentially it's just anyone who has a role that they represent, you know, in any form for the city. Be nice.
We have to be nice.
Be nice.
Is it states that we will comply with all federal laws and state laws? And it's not intended to usurper preempt that. And so depending on your role with the city, sometimes that line may be diff, may be different.
Could you give an example?
Um, sure, it's very fact-driven, so, you know, keep that in mind. But the, a city employee, when they take employment, there are certain obligations and certain requirements we can impose in order to protect the interests of the city as an entity or as a workplace. Those same restrictions or obligations, we would not impose those on an elected official, for example. And so, without, without potentially impeding our constitutional rights, there might be some things that they, that we can ask of our employees as employees when we have a policy and when we have, um, a employee handbook, that we couldn't ask of an elected official who we don't have that relation, that same relationship with.
Yeah, it's a different relationship. And also we're volunteers, so it seems like maybe there's a spectrum.
Yeah, there really is. And it is a, it is something that requires careful navigation. But I think that you've done that as a city, which is good. And we have a lot of direction on the legal end because we have a lot of case precedent. As communities start developing what their social media policies will be, both with their employees and their council members, but also with the community at large. There's that, what do we do with comments on our Facebook page? And, you know, what are the laws that apply to that? So there's a lot of, a lot of topics sort of wrapped into one.
I remember being in council a few years ago, I can't remember when, I don't remember the situation. But I remember someone coming in from the community and saying that they had been blocked from using the city page on Facebook because of comments that they had made. And then the, I think this is when we had the policy, I think it came out of all of that. I don't know when the date is. Well, it seems too long ago for that.
Well, I know at the Harbor Masters Conference, Juneau did a presentation and a lot of the comments that they filter out are, you know, obviously inappropriate words, hate speech. You know, there's, there's a level of public comments that shouldn't be made on a post. And so the city would be in charge of monitoring that content also.
And, um, you know, we've had, uh, the city manager and department heads have had the conversation about when the Facebook page, um, pages are set up, the Facebook accounts, there is, it is advisable to just not allow comments. It's a one-way, you push out information, but it's not, uh, it's not a bullet board where people can engage, so that's the recommendation.
Which I agree with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's usually my recommendation as well. Just because once you, not that you can't take another approach, but once you do that, then you're, you're expending a lot of resources to do it well.
So is that what we do with our Facebook pages now?
That is the current, that is the current recommendation. And I think what you're referring to, if I remember, it was a couple, several years ago. And that was long before this kind of got formalized and addressed and shored up a little bit, you know? That was, um, sort of a early days.
Yeah, I'm not trying to bring up old garbage, but I'm just trying to figure out what, where do we stand now? And how do we, I'm just thinking like a volunteer, say a volunteer is volunteering for the city. They're out doing, say, I don't know, whatever they do, pink cheeks. And it's cold and rainy and they're saying, this city didn't even give us rain jackets. And they're just talking, but now somebody's videoing and they got that in the background. So they're just talking, right? Is that a problem? Are they defaming the city because they're talking about...
That's somebody else filming it though, right? Putting it out there. That's not the person that's volunteering, putting it on the website, right? That's just something that...
Does this policy say if somebody else videos you, it's not a problem?
I think, I think that's where you were talking about the spectrum. Where if it's a volunteer complaining versus maybe the Parks and Rec director, you know, I don't know, saying the city's cheap, blah, 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 or whatever. I mean, I think there's a spectrum there. I can't imagine that...
And if we have that spectrum, it's like on these ones, I think it's like, it's, I'm saying this, it's kind of laughable, it's a silly example. But I work in concrete, so we're deciding. But then you said somebody needs to decide. You said that our city manager, the attorney and a third, I thought you said a third person.
HR.
Oh, HR, would be deciding.
For city employees.
So...
So if I got a call and it was, hey, there's a volunteer and they're complaining about rain gear on the... I mean, I, I'm using that example as a, but I would, my first thought would be, okay, let's look at the policy. Let's look at libel, defamation, and the elements that go into those that make those actionable types of speech. And that would, that would mean that type of speech is subject to some sort of control. That wouldn't be a violation of the constitution. I look at the role of the individual. Do they have a duty to the city? And I would likely advise in that situation that this is really speech that, especially if they were not given rain gear, which then makes it a truthful statement, that this is an individual exercising their free, their, their right to free speech and engaging in the community on the forums that you've given them to do so, or on their own. But really, the city doesn't have much they can do here. You know, that, that, and again, I don't have all the intimate details regarding this hypothetical, but that would be the scenario. And so we would go through that. Because the last thing you wanna do is silence your community or...
If there's somewhere in your thread that people can be fired for stuff, then that, when it gets to that, that gets pretty serious.
Yeah, and I think that at that point, we're really looking at, a lot of times on the other end of those comments is another potential litigant, right? A lot of times when you have a comment made that rises to the level of libel or defamation that warrants termination, then you often have another person on the other side. And there's a civil action that looms there as well.
I don't know what you're talking about, Ron, I honestly don't. Can you tell me what you mean the other side of it?
The other person being affected by the comments, essentially.
Like whoever didn't give out the rain gear?
Well, not the, the rain gear one would not, wouldn't, wouldn't work. The, um, an allegation that somebody physically hurt somebody else. And the result of that, and that is a city employee making that comment or a city official on the, on a, you know, on a forum that, and then we find out it's not true. And we find out the person lost their job as a result because they work with, you know, something like that. I mean, I'm making this up as I go, but when you have a scenario like that, then we're really looking at a lot of different potential damages, points of liability and... So having a policy that's clear on the type of speech you don't wanna see and that the city is not going to permit is important because that's actually considered when we're looking at what speech is protected. Because if you don't tell people, you know, if you don't give them that, if you don't take that first step, then it's, makes it harder to protect, you know.
Is it fair to say that the terms of service, like if you're using Facebook, like that would be kind of the guideline? The terms of service on that would be kind of, you know, like big speech and that would pretty be, pretty much be in those guidelines of what's acceptable and not? Cause we're talking about social media, right, and that. So, I mean, you're not posting on the city website, you would be posting on a Facebook which has terms of service of what you could say and not say.
And there may be individuals that can make statements that are discriminatory or suggest discriminatory conduct, but the city as a government actor and also under statutes cannot discriminate. We're, you know, and so we have standards there that our employees need to comply with and can get sideways with, maybe in their individual capacity. You know, maybe those are just opinions, but when they're expressed... capacity, you know, maybe those are just opinions, but when they're expressed as a city employee in their official capacity, they become a problem that is a violation of our policy.
I know, I'm happy to defer to Mr. McDonald.
Well, I'm, let's make sure we're covering everything, because we still have to move on. So are we, have we talked about, did council have any more comments with social networking policy or social media policy?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, go ahead.
So, what we established was this kind of circle of HR and attorney firm as a whole, and city manager making the decisions. And with the volunteers and with all the employees, I can see, I do understand to some extent the org chart and how the power flows, so that one makes sense. When we get into appointing elected officials, I've had a hard time understanding how, how that would work. Do you all...
Well, I guess if I went on a sexist or racist rant on Facebook, um, I don't know, the city manager might not have any specific power over what I say, but council could definitely censure me.
Sure.
We could bring, you know, council could, two people could write a resolution and censor what I'm saying.
Can you say more about that? And can you say how, is this then a separate circle of decision-making?
Well, yeah, of course, because I think the city attorney, the city clerk, and the city manager are employees.
Wait, clerk's not in the circle, HR is.
Right, but what I'm saying is, these three people right here are our employees. So, if those, the, none of these people would have, you know, any power over us to, to necessarily tell us what to do.
We have power over us.
We, over, we have three employees. So, the, these folks definitely, you know, the city manager definitely has people under his purview that he is in charge of, so that would be who he...
I got that, the circle of three and then the org chart.
So what's the question that...
The, the question is about, we're council, so you, and it sounds like your understanding of is, is that council governs itself.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Exactly, right, right.
And that the council is responsible to the voters.
Yes.
And then we have two other boards and commissions.
Yeah.
So would you consider that P and B is also...
We would definitely, yeah, boards and commissions, we would censor them also, if necessary.
They don't themselves, you're saying council would be the circle.
They might do, it might be double level, I mean, they might do something within their body, but then also it would come back to us.
They respond to council.
Yeah.
And, and I think that's, that's reading through this, of, and, and, I'm going through this one, too, I think this is great, I, I applaud you guys for getting all this done there, too, and everything. And I, and I think along that same lines, if, if I go on Facebook, and I, I don't like sitting next to John O'Shea, but then if I go on Facebook and say, he's a, he's a no-good snake eater, you know, and something like that, then I'm making a personal attack, and that's where this comes into play, that, that, and that's the same thing, you know, that, Facebook won't censure that.
No.
Facebook won't stop that, but this policy will.
Well, this policy gives some kind of recourse, is how I understand. So then, you're saying that John could come back and say, "Somebody, get on my team, because I need to make this stop," or something.
No, and that's where the policy comes back and says, "You can't do that, according to our policy, you can't say that..."
But it's already done, Dale, so like, what do you do?
We would bring it to council. We'd bring it to council for council actions.
And then there would be repercussions in council.
As a resolution, or as a discussion item, with an agenda statement.
And one thing that would, that also happens, because unlike the city manager and city clerk, the city attorney by statute represents, we represent the city, right, we're not the council, so, we, we would be obligated, and we're obligated to advise you on the law, so I would likely, assuming the mayor was not involved, it would be a, "Hey, it looks like we may have a violation of your policy here by council. Here, I'm gonna submit an attorney-client privileged memo to council," you know, explaining the violations and letting council know their options for censure, or whatever steps might be appropriate, and what the risks are, and then council would decide what to do with that, you know, whether or not you want to have an executive session and so, but, but it may come from, it may come from the city attorney.
If it's brought to your attention, it might, something might be generated to us.
And then, and then that would then come back to that person, say, "Hey, you know, that, what you did was over the line, according to policy, that was beyond that there, too. I, I go on social media and says, 'We need to have all the employees go out and picket the city, because everybody should be, have their, you know, we don't like, you know, this person or whatever,'" something like that, too. So I want all the city employees to go out there. That was totally against what, what my job is there, too, but on, on social media, it won't stop me from saying that.
Yeah, exactly.
But this policy will say, "That's, that's violating our policies." And so you can't say that, you either have to retract it, or we're gonna have you removed.
Well, with any policy, there's always some level of interpretation, and what I've been trying to get at is, who are the interpreters? Who are the arbiters? And who is the appeal, where's the appeal process?
Well, I think city manager, and then for hi- his employees, and then council for ourselves.
And I, I see that the city manager, with, with the city manager process, there is a grievance whole process, so people say, "No, that wasn't above all." And with council, I don't see that that same process exists.
Well, that, that would be simple. If John was to say something on social media, that was out there, too, then I would bring that onto the agenda, to have that either censured, or have him removed from office.
And then what's his recourse?
Will not removed.
And then that, well, that, that would come before the whole body. We would either take that, you know, take that type of action to say, "Hey, yeah," because that's what we're governing ourselves in now.
And once you take that action, then you're taking a quasi, you're making a quasi-judicial action, even though you don't have a ethics code, per se, that triggers a constitutional due process right. So at that point, there would be, we'd create a procedure, because we don't necessarily need a law in the books, although we can, we can put one there, so long as we create a procedure that makes sense and complies with due process requirements. Council would in essence sit as a decision-making body and make a determination, and Council Member Osanga, in this scenario, could appeal. If we don't have a right of appeal, if we haven't created one, he would appeal to the, the Superior Court.
Okay. Not to the voters?
Not to the voters, no, if...
The voters and the bosses of everything.
Well, if they said something so egregious, and they, he gets recalled, there would be the recall, I mean, the voters could recall someone.
That's true, too.
But then that one, that's exactly right, but it would go through the recall petition.
Yeah, that's a check, recall, being recalled is a check.
Okay, if, if council censures somebody on council, what is their recourse?
They could...
That they could appeal to the court, but they can't appeal to the voter. So in this situation, the court is actually...
But the voters could recall the people that censured that person.
True, okay, good, we've reached the logical conclusion, I'm satisfied, thank you.
So, moral of this story is, don't say anything.
Yeah.
Don't say anything terrible on social media, which should be just a general human being stand to be human.
That was one of the great things I got from A and L much years ago, was the, the, the illusion of impropriety, it's just as bad as impropriety.
Right, it is, it's true.
So, did you have a comment on the social networking policy or social media policy before we move on? Yeah, did you have a question?
Thank you, well, I, I kind of didn't get the gist of the conversation halfway through, but I was just thinking, you know, as far as people talking to you, not you guys having comments, just have an off button, you know, and that's traditionally what they've done, is just have one person take all the flak for everybody.
From everybody?
Um, communications and information.
Okay, so page seven is a little overview of the various ways that people throughout the community can access, can ask for, or seek out information and communications. So, we have the city website, and I'll show you in just a minute, how a couple of other changes we're making to that, for citizens to ask for information, or furnish a reach-out to us. There is the email distribution list, we call the city calendar list, but that's a, that's a series, um, we have a hundred and something people on the list that I maintain, and that's all, it just, send an email or call me and ask it to be put on the email distribution list, and you're on it, and then you'll get everything that I send out to the public. We have Facebook pages that the city, official Facebook pages that the city has, and there's another page later in the packet to show all, there's, I think, six or eight different Facebook pages. And then there's NICSOL, and Carl is gonna speak to that in just a short minute. You have been hearing about NICSOL, um, you, we've referenced it a couple of times during some council meetings, but tonight you'll have a night, a real better idea of what that involves. And so just quickly to address two things, and one that Mayor brought up earlier, is what about the fix-it reports? If I see a light is blown out, or a stop sign is down, or something like that, what can I do? So, on page eight, Seward Listens and Fix-It are going to live under the community tab on the, from the homepage, and they, they will continue to exist. And the only change that we're making with that, and it, and it could be a temporary, the city manager and I have worked together, those, that will, those inputs will come directly to the clerk's office. I will disperse them to the department head with a, with a CC to the city manager, so he's aware of anything that comes through, but while he's short-staffed, shorthanded, we're just gonna try and work together on that. We don't get a whole lot of them coming through, but that will continue, so the public can report anything that they see that's, needs to be addressed.
Which, that's pretty similar to what we've had under Seward Listens.
Yeah.
There's, I'd like there to be a way of letting people know that exists, too, I mean, because I've told so many people about that, when they ask me, "What do I do about this?" I go to that.
Could we put it on the next utility bill?
Wouldn't that be cool?
Could we do that?
It's a romance, but I think we can put a message...
Because everybody gets that.
And, and we can also put it on Facebook.
But I mean, it's a really valuable thing.
I mean, I'd be happy to do that through, through the page that we have set up. Try and get the...
On that same subject, the way it's set up right now, it automatically goes to those department heads.
Oh, it's right.
It doesn't go through the clerk to be dispersed, but we've got so many different people now, it's a hard thing to go. One thing to look at, as far as especially weekend stuff, you wouldn't be here on the weekend, I wouldn't get those calls until Monday. So I would like to see, not temporary is great, but I'd like to see that get to the point where we're streamlined again, where it just, they get it, and it comes to me if I've got an issue.
Right.
Sometimes they're urgent, sometimes they can wait till Monday, but I'd like to make that.
It's actually a function of the architecture of the website itself, and so we have to make a choice of one email. And so it would be going to the city manager, or some, just one email, initially.
So it's different than what we do?
So we have to work with the vendor to see if we can have that pick list identified to department heads, because currently that's not an option with this new website.
I just think we need to make that clear, like, let's say Big Rocks on both, like, road vehicles.
Yeah, yeah.
That happens on the weekend, I hope they call the police, and then they relate to us. But that's, that's just one of those things that we should...
So what we should do, too, until we get that functionality, is with that, you know, fix-it requests or Seward Listens, it needs to say, "In the cases of emergency, contact Seward Dispatch." Shouldn't it say that, or...
Do you get, very often, do you, do you get the emails that come to you through that on what you do?
Yeah, yeah, just reply to everyone.
Okay. So we'll look at that, adding something to the website.
And then maybe there's something, maybe there's titles, I mean, for me, I thought they were done with Seward Listens and Seward Fix-It. Oh, maybe they are, maybe they're saying that maybe that's the way to split it, that Seward Listens is in general things, and Fix-It's would become electric, utility-type stuff, street electric, that would go right direct, or, I, I'm just throwing it out.
Yeah, no, that's great.
Yeah, because that's confusing, yeah.
Yep. Yep, we can definitely take a look at that. Thank you. So that's one thing, and then, on the next page, or page nine, what we currently have for, under signup, that, on the old website, for emergency notifications and community alerts, is wholly going to be replaced with NICSOL. And, and you'll see that that offers a variety of various levels of communication, so the community will be invited to sign up for that. Page 10 is the Facebook pages that exist, so there's six of them, and these are official Facebook pages. So what the city manager has done is put in the policy that if a department wants to crease, create a Facebook page, they register it through MIS, and MIS help assist in creating it, so that they do the comment lockdown, and they, it's set up, and the account specific is set up in keeping with the policy. So we have six of them currently. Any questions on that? Do you know how to like it, or just access those Facebook pages?
What do you consider the role of your Facebook page, as opposed to the emails that you send out and the city website?
It's just another source of information. I don't, I'm not a believer in one way of communicating, because one way is, is people receive information on a variety of levels, at different times and different ways, so we have the newspaper that we use, we have, we post notices, we send out through email, we post things on the website, and now, I'm happy to have the Facebook page, because in the realm of the clerk's world, it will allow me to push out messages who, you know, there's already, I don't know, 200 people, I think, or almost 200 people signed up for, or who have connected with this page already. And I just launched it a couple weeks ago, so, yeah. It's just another opportunity to push, push out information.
I, I love that there's no Twitter page yet. I guess in 10 years, we can be behind the times and open the first Twitter page, which I don't Twitter, but Snapchat.
So when I get a little more savvy with things, this new website is, this is one of the features that we liked about it, but I need to learn a little bit more about. You can, we can set up a campaign, a communication campaign through the website, wherein the content is loaded to the website, and then it triggers on a diary, it will automatically
Update all of us, yeah.
Send Facebook posts out to your, so you, we can have Facebook posts going over the weekend, even when no one's in the office. Which is a feature that could be, you know, somebody like this guy who's super savvy, if the rest of us can get up to speed on it, then, you know, Parks and Rec, campground stuff, that, you could have all kinds of uses, so. So now, drum roll, I'm gonna hand it over to Carl to talk to you about NICSOL.
So several years ago, we started looking at NICSOL, or the, the police department did, after our issues and communication we had during the tsunami warnings. We were using Facebook, but we learned pretty quick that that was too passive of a system. Basically, it's more like a online booth and board, where people actually have to be logged in, looking at it to get that information. So we started looking at a better way to do mass communication. So we looked at NICSOL, which, if you turn to page, page 12, listen, in a single click, we can, we can hit text messages, emails, voice, mobile app, the IPaaS system, which is the federal emergency communication system, the city webpage, Facebook pages, Twitter, and Google Alerts. And Google Alerts is when, you know, based on your geolocation, when you log into Google or on the homepage of Google, or when you search for something on Google, it'll use your zip code and come, it'll pop up any alerts that are active in that area. So with a single button, you can hit all of those using NICSOL, and it's very easy to sign up. It, it does require resident opt-in to, to receive these messages, you have to provide your phone number, or, and/or your email address. But all you do to sign up is you text to 888-777-7, your zip code, so you can do this anywhere you ask for any zip code.
Right now?
Yeah. Or 99664, and it'll opt you in to all agencies that are signed up for NICSOL, which currently would be the State Troopers here, and us, the Seward Police Department, and we're working on getting the city of Seward set up as well.
Would you say the numbers?
So, three sevens.
Four numbers.
Oh, three sevens.
888-777.
Yeah.
Three sevens?
So triple eight, triple seven.
So, what do we do?
Text your, text your zip code. Or like in Anchorage, I have, I texted in Anchorage... Or like, in Anchorage, I have, I texted an Anchorage zip code, so that I get the updates for that area also.
What, what comes up when you text?
It'll send you a message that you've been signed up.
What are you finding in terms of people being willing to, to sign up? I don't know what the, what the category is called, but like, compliance, or sign-up percentages.
Opt-in.
Opt-in, yes, thank you. Let's see what it says then.
Well, it depends on how-
No charge, stop to cancel, help for help.
Oh, so then you have to-
Yeah, so we can, I can run through a demo here, to kind of show you how, how easy it is for us on our end, and how easy it is for you on your end to receive these. I'm still working on it.
Then it says I could also add my email, so I could get multiple-
Yeah, so if you, after doing it on your phone, you can log into the actual website, to your account, you'll set up an account there, and you can pick out which agencies you want to receive alerts from, what type of alerts you want to receive. If you want to email only, or if you want to text and email. And our system that we're purchasing allows for voice calls as well. So we can do automated voice calls, or recorded voice calls, directly to people. And so it could, it'll send out to everybody that's on the list right away. So it's, it's instant, very, very, very quickly. On that same line with the voice calls, we are allowed, we can use the landlines in particular, we can use geo-fencing to determine, okay, we just want to send this voice message to forest acres, let them know there's a power outage. And so just hit those places and not call everybody in the entire city. And that's using the 911 landline systems.
It's interesting that you can do that, but then I think, at the same time, somebody would be like, why did you get that message, and why didn't I get that message?
Yeah.
Because maybe I would want to know that there was no power in forest acres.
Yeah, I mean-
My second question is, what, when you do sign up for something like this, it, does it ask for, like, can it use your location? Just because I know that there's been recent things on social media about people being concerned about other, like, ring systems and stuff like that, that some people feel that it's an invasion of their privacy, which I understand this is an opt-in program. I just would like to know your-
Yeah, this one does not use location at all. It's only, that's why the geographical location's only for landlines with actual addresses. Because your mobile phone, you can be anywhere, you can be in Washington DC and still receive an alert from 999664. So it does not base your location on what type of alerts you receive, it's just whatever list you signed up for. So if you, like, I'll show you mine. So when you log into NICSOL after signing up, you'll, it'll pop up with what, some alerts from places that you're signed up for, so I've got Anchorage Police Department. So this is what an alert might look like. When we set up an alert, we can either send a text by itself, or we can send a link that'll link to a webpage. So this is what the webpage might look like, once we send an alert, we can fill all this out. And so people can refer to this page, and follow the link, and find more information. And then as we make updates, it'll automatically update each post. So we can have one single post, not like Facebook, where it might have several different versions shared, it'll just be this, this main one.
Are you, as the Police Department in Seward, gonna be creating these?
Yes.
Okay. You, you, like this, that would say Seward Police Department, and then we'd talk about storm warning, or whatever?
Yeah, whatever type of post you want, we can do alerts, advisories, or just community messages.
But it sounds like, when I say you, it means Seward Police Department, but also you personally. Are you the one? There's two accounts.
Yeah, so there's, for, we can set up whoever, how many users we need to administrate this, so more than likely, we'll have most of dispatch will be able to send out these alerts, so we can get it in a timely manner as they receive information.
Like road closures.
Yeah.
Those kinds of things.
Yeah, so there's three different, there's like red alerts, there's yellow advisories, which is important information, but not emergency. And then there's community, like, notifications, like, hey, we're having a parade down this area, that's not-
So I could advertise my concerts by just calling?
If you shut down a road.
But once you log in, you can go to your locations, you can set up at different locations. So like, for, like, my home one, it's 99664. And then if I want to go to Anchorage, I can set up for Anchorage. And then when you hit Settings, you can go to each of those different locations you set up, and you can see which agencies you can sign up for.
State Troopers have one, I get State Troopers, Seward Highway.
So I'm signed up for our PD one, and for the State Troopers, the main one, and for the aid attachment here, which is the local troopers here. And then you can decide if you want, just want the, the emergency alerts, if you want the alerts and the advisories, or if you want the alerts and everything. And ours is special, because we now have the voice, emergency voice messages. So you can set up where you would like to receive your voice messages, or opt out of those completely. And, but like, if you were to go up to Anchorage for the day, and you want to receive alerts while you're up there, you can, you can opt into those, and then when you get back home, you can opt out.
So NICSOL will be solely managed from the Police Department?
Well, we have, we'll have two accounts. We have, the Police Department has its own, mainly because of the tipping, like, we can request tips. And so when we send out a message, we can say, please reply if you see it.
Or missing people.
Yeah, and they can send it back to us. And since we want to keep that confidential, anonymous, we're just gonna keep it only for people in the Police Department can do those.
Okay.
But we have a second account that the City of Seward's gonna be opening up, which will incorporate all the other departments, so they-
Like Fire Department?
Yeah.
Yeah, all the departments will have the ability to send out their own messages. So road closures might come from Public Works Department, or-
Harbor, any harbor emergency, boat fire in the harbor.
Yeah, all the departments will have access to the realm.
So this gives us the ability to set up public alerts, and we can also do internal alerts, so like, I have the Police Department set up to where, with a click of a button, we can notify everybody in the Police Department, hey, we need you right now. And that saves a lot of time for dispatch to have to call, call. And then also, it gives us the opportunity, they can, can set up to require a reply. So they'll get the text messages, reply that you received this, and they can reply back, yes, I'm coming in right now. So we can know who's coming, who got the message, who hasn't.
Emergency mobilizations.
Oh, like if the EOC is standing up?
Yeah. And so we can set that up for the City of Seward, they can set up an EOC one, where everybody who needs to be at the EOC, they can send out immediately, get here now, they can reply, yes, I'm on my way, or you can know that they didn't get the message. So we can, just really quick, if you want to give, I can do a demo for you. So I just created just a test group for us, that we can, we can opt in. So I just created this group, it's called Seward Test. So you can, you can see how many people have opted in so far, which is none.
I think that is an option.
What's that?
I don't remember that being an option. He just created it.
I just created it.
Oh.
So now, if, if to that same number, 888-777, we text-
This sounds like a game.
Text Seward Test.
Whoops, I got Seward Year. Auto-correct.
I got Seward Rest.
Once we get a city account, tsunami, Police Department or city, what do you think?
Oh my god.
Both, potentially?
Yeah, probably, yeah. Hopefully then we have a lot, a lot of coverage with that, something like that, there are two.
So refreshing, looks like two people-
Because I know there's, again, two when we had that one, that last, you know, there was a lot of people that, where do I go find that information of what the tsunami thing is, something like, there are two, so, yeah.
So road closures, you know, snowfall, you know, just, we get a water leak, that sort of thing is, not necessarily rises to the level of emergency.
Yeah, sure.
Always, but, so that would be an advisory that would go out. Emergencies would, yeah, if, when the EOC gets stood on that note.
Oh, so there's two of them.
Yeah. We would all be definitely working together to send out the messages to.
Busted water lines, stay out of this area, please, and stuff like that.
Yeah, advisory, send directly from Public Works out to-
Is it Seward Test, all one word on?
Yeah, Seward Test, all one word. So when you sign up, just using the zip code, and if you sign up online, it'll go through to what they call the main one, it's called the NICSOL wire.
Oh yeah, I just got on Seward Test, okay.
And so, that's the main group that we'll send messages out to. And we can create these subgroups, where if we want to do something more specific, let's say like, for 4th of July, have anyone, anyone that wants anything regarding 4th of July notices, they can sign up to the 4th of July group, and it's like a temporary group that visitors can sign up for. And so anything 4th of July related in the city, we'll go, we'll have messages for that. So that's kind of what we're doing here with the Seward Test part. Anybody still having problems? So now if I, for, to go to-
For what?
For the race.
Yeah.
So I'll send out an alert.
Oh, I'm already on there.
Do a missing person.
So we will, we anticipate having to do some community education and training on this once we're up and-
Well, it's been around for a while. I mean, I signed up for this a couple years ago, for the State Troopers. So it's not, I mean, it might be new to us, but it's been around.
So what we have through the borough, getting their alerts, what is that? Because I get text messages.
KPP alerts.
Right. That's not NICSOL though.
That's not, NICSOL, they're not on the NICSOL system, I don't think, are they? I don't know, KPP alerts is not NICSOL.
But they send their own alerts.
Yes. So we, we could piggyback off of them, but then that's going through another third party, where like, we ran into a, during the tsunami warnings, two different sets of information going out, and it was kind of like playing a game of phone.
That's gonna happen anyway, though, because they have theirs.
But this one, we can send, I think people-
You're in control of the-
Yeah, you're in control of your local information, not having to rely on someone who's not in your area.
Right.
So I think people would probably listen more to the local city government putting out active alerts than the alert that was sent out 45 minutes ago by the borough.
So that's incorporated into the city website? So once the city website goes live?
It will replace, so the NICSOL will replace that emergency alert.
Okay.
Opportunity that the city is currently using.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking back to two years ago, when I was in Hawaii, and got the alert, everybody in Hawaii on their cellphones got the alert that there was an incoming nuclear strike, because somebody pushed the wrong button in a test. So how foolproof is this? It's only as good as whoever's sending it they have.
Yeah, anything that just requires human input's gonna have some type of error factor. The best we can do is try to pay attention. So here's a-
That's never good.
A message I'll send out to y'all for a missing child. Make sure I got the right-
And this is going to Seward Test.
Seward Test, right there.
I'll just do the test.
So that's one thing we verify is which group it's going to.
Did you get it?
Yes.
Oh, apparently, there it is.
Yep, so now if you were to reply, say-
Missing two-year female.
Found the person.
Yeah, found or something.
And if you hit that link, it'll take you to the webpage.
So the Police Department has started their internal process of getting their staff all connected to this.
So here's the tip I got, I received, so now we can do a one-on-one anonymous, they're anonymous, while they know who we are, communication, we can ask them more questions. And everything's logged and recorded, so we know who's, which user's using what and doing what. As you can see on the right side here, I've been busy.
Okay.
Yeah, that's great. Okay. Question, yeah, question about getting people to opt in.
So that's-
What's the program, like, what's the, how you get the message out? And how do you incentivize people opting in?
So that's kind of the most difficult part, is to get people opt in. And it takes a lot of advertising. What a lot of people, a lot of places are doing is they're adding little noses on, like, utility bills, on other flyers for public information.
Utilizing the Facebook page.
Yeah, Facebook, Facebook page.
Mention it in the council meetings, just wherever we can.
And then, generally, by, I think in an area like we have, with smaller, a lot of word of mouth, people, I think over time, people will realize that if they want the most up-to-date information, then, then NICSOL, sign up, opting in, that is the best way to do it.
Everybody I know goes on Facebook.
Yeah. And this will post to Facebook as well. So there's, there's still that, they'll still be getting those alerts.
This article I'm looking at says that giving out prizes is a good incentive, and they don't have to be big, they can be small, just people love to be winners. So I was just wondering if you guys would think about whether at a council meeting, we might want to give out prize to whoever signs up and gets a text on their phone?
I think that people just want, I mean, people either want the information or they don't. I mean, I don't think they need to be incentivized, I mean, you know, I like to know because people call me and want to know, so that's why I do it. Yeah, I think, you know, there's a group of people that won't sign up for this, because they're gonna be afraid.
So on the PD's website that'll start tomorrow, I've got the signup on the right here. And then also, got a live feed, so any alerts we put in there will, will pop up there as well, and same with Facebook.
So Council shares, if there's, so we could share that page on our personal Facebook pages, and encourage people to sign up.
Because normalize it, socialize it. Having a trusted partner to work with on outreach can be highly successful.
So there's seven of us up here.
So yeah, so we'll have to get together, either it's department heads, or it's administration, and figure out an advertising campaign that we can put out, kind of get the word out. And it's free to the public to sign up, and they can opt out anytime. It's very simple to do so.
Great. Seems like you've done a ton of work, we very much appreciate it.
No problem.
Is it fun, Carl?
It is. It is. I enjoy finding new ways to communicate.
I think that's a good, I just feel like you as the spokesperson for it is very encouraging. Like, you caught me!
Yeah, good. Well, thank you.
One convert. Well, good, are there any other questions regarding this section, city website, Seward Listens and Fix-It, emergency notifications, city clerk email, city department webpages or NICSOL? Okay, the next, let's talk about YouTube.
Next and last is YouTube. And so this relates to city council, and then all of the boards and commissions. So what we're doing is, with the new camera system that we have, and it records and livestreams-
It does live streaming.
Every meeting that, when we're using this. So all the boards and commissions are agreeing to adopt this system, and so all their meetings and work sessions now will be broadcast through GCI, and automatically uploaded to YouTube. And with just a, we just have to go in, in our office the next day and tweak the title, because it defaults to a generic title, and we'll tweak the title of what the recording is, and it'll stack it into playlists for planning and zoning, city council, PACAB, HP, and so they'll all be, you know, retrievable, and citizens will be able to start. So we're, we're putting all the audio files into Legislative History.
Okay.
We're not having audio files on the website anymore. And so the choices for folks to, to either listen to or playback a meeting will be, go to YouTube, or go to Legislative History, if you want the older versions of it.
And will comments be restricted under, on the YouTube page?
I'll have to look at that. IT is, so I kind of made a mistake when I set this up, because I didn't know about, I put my name in there instead of City of Seward, I didn't realize it was gonna display.
Oh, oh.
So they're gonna fix that for me, and then I'll look at comments, I don't know that comments are-
Because I am on some, I, I do look on some YouTube channels, and they are, there's, there's some ability to restrict comments. My concern is not with the comments themselves, but if someone posts a question, and we're not checking- not checking that, that it gives a false sense of people having.
I think we have it turned off. Like, if you could still leave, it's a read.
Right, 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 we don't, no one sees it, yeah. So I'm not afraid of comments, I just don't want it to be.
I don't want, yeah, I don't want someone hanging out.
Thinking that they, yeah.
Waiting for an answer.
I just love the Youtubes. I'm amazed, and I remember two years ago how difficult it was to listen to those meetings. Wow, it's really transformed it.
Oh, yeah, when I started at the clerk's office, you had to come in and listen to the tape, or buy the tape. That was, you know, 20 years ago, when I worked at the clerk's office, you had to buy a $5 tape audio recording or come in here and listen to it. That was the option.
Get you a new picture, though.
So 20 years later.
Well, here we are.
I'm gonna update that picture.
Send me one. I mean, I remember doing that at church when I was growing up. I was one of the volunteers who recorded the church.
Cause it's gray, coast skirts, don't you?
Oh, okay.
Okay, so let's make sure that we have, we didn't, obviously, the city manager manages many of these policies and procedures, you know, the clerk's in charge of the distribution of information. Is there anything that you guys want to add to any of this, or? That, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but just anything that came up during our meeting, or?
No, I think at the legislative session in August, I think it's, there's been some controversy about censorship, blocking people, so it's just better to disseminate and not get into those challenges.
And restrict the comments. Well, and that's the other concern, again, same with YouTube, people think they're asking a question or trying to get action, and maybe it's not being monitored in the same way as emailing or, you know, getting something specific.
But I think that it's good that there is a lot of contact, connectivity of email and phone numbers, and that's generally how we hear from most people, but not necessarily all.
I like the format of the new webpage, I do like the mobile, because I'm on the mobile.
How soon do you think, before the city gets into the Nixle and gets that set up, how long?
Before we get the City of Seward site set up, probably another two, two and a half weeks. Well, then, after that, we'll be training people. So up, fully up and running, I would say several months.
Yeah. The, the training of getting everybody trained up on how to make those alerts or something.
Yeah, and I think the urgency in the law enforcement side will be more immediate.
Right.
Then, you know, like, Park and Rec or events, and.
It'll take a little bit of time to get the workflow going, and time to get people in the habit of doing things, and also, we want to set up good policies to follow. It'll be a learning process.
There are a few members of the public here, is there any public comments, or did you guys want to?
We can still come in and talk.
Yes. Human contact is the most important. Thank you, Lee.
It still exists.
Yes, yes, that's true.
Anytime.
You guys have any? Well, let me just say again, I think I said it in passing, but lots of great work by the Clerk's Department, this looks phenomenal. And it sounds like great job with limited budgets, which I know is important to all of us up here, so appreciate all the hard, months of hard work, and launch date tomorrow, and everyone, if we notice something, we won't post on Facebook that it's a disaster, we will feel free to send you a nice email and say, hey, we noticed this, hey, we noticed that, and then, okay.
And I just actually, thank you, George Odell, because I just got a text from him, he verified that YouTube is turned off, disabled comments and chat on the YouTube channel.
Oh, good, yay, thank you, George. Who's watching at home.
Instrumental.
Yeah, thanks to IT, sounds like, and Officer Schaefer-Meyer, and department heads, sounds like department heads had a lot of heavy lifting.
Yeah.
So, yeah. Cool. Anything else for the good of the order?
I so appreciate that information about how people are viewing the website and using that as a lens to craft what we need.
Yeah, it was eye-opening to see the statistics, the analytics on the old website and how they were coming in.
I mean, for me, this is almost always how I'm writing emails, or agenda statements, or, so.
Same, same.
Yeah.
Speaking of that, and do you know how, where you have, tell me about the council space.
What?
I hadn't, yeah, we haven't talked about that, but.
Oh, no, we have given a direction and voted on that.
Yeah.
And what?
I didn't hear what you asked.
I didn't hear what you said either.
The workspace.
We have given direction to the city manager to work on a council space.
Oh, space.
Or we could have a printer and a, an area to, a place to meet people in person.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to know how.
I know the holidays have been in between, were you two gonna be and talk about it?
Yeah, we've already, we have, we've talked about it.
Some ideas.
And I just checked in with Dustin a few days ago, and he's, he's got it on his list.
Oh, IT director.
IT has it on their list, and they've got a desktop identified, and I think a printer, it's just a matter of them having a chance to get in there, install it.
Yeah, good question. And I think we are looking at the old assistant city manager's space, or the conference room, I forget what we, conference room.
Yeah, we have lots of spaces.
Okay, nice, good, good.
I love using the library. Maybe some more space for the citizens to use the.
Yeah, I know, it seems like it's been a while with those holidays in between, so maybe, yeah, we won't give any direction, but maybe we'll add.
I just wanted to check up on it, because I definitely could use space.
Yeah. And then the surface pros will be coming in sometime, with, probably within the next few weeks as well, so we'll be doing.
Poor Tony hasn't had anything to work off of this whole time.
No more thing else, my phone. So like, all that, all the communication that I do is on my phone or through the library, so it's hard.
Exhausting.
My work phone is cracked, too, still.
Yeah, no, that's good to keep in mind. All right, we will adjourn at 7:40.